You're live.
Thank you. Okay. Please begin, thank you for your patience.
Well, good morning, everyone. Bringing the Columbus Tax Center to the council meeting. It's Friday, August 20th, 2021. Time I have is 9:31. Go ahead and do welcomes and introductions. I'm Mike Wrinkle, Chief Deputy Auditor, Real Estate Chief Applied Officer, filling in as the designated for Delaware County Hunter George Tyson.
Emily Hatfield, Treasury CFO for Olandangie Local Schools.
Christopher Bell, Attorney at Delaware County Attorney.
Jason Jenkins, Representative Mayor's Office.
Peter Dyer, Representative City Council.
Martin T. D. Gervin, City Attorney's Office.
Phil Martin, PM, Public Security.
Joel Larson, City of Columbus Economic Development.
Governor, City of Columbus Economic Development.
Bob Jones, Enterprise Zone Manager, Economic Development.
Mark Lundin, I'm the Economic Development Minister for the state.
It looks like we have quorum. I don't know, Bob, would you like to go over the bullet in there? Or should we go ahead and turn things over to you to start the first item?
Yeah, just introduce number two.
Yes. All right, start by the J. Item number two, the tax incentive review. Material content review.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Everyone's got a packet, and so we'll be going through it for you. Quickly, the contents of the packet. Left-hand pocket and right-hand. Dung through it. These documents will refer to the revenue. Left-hand pocket are the agendas with two sessions today. Some of our county sessions, so it's an agenda, it's the one pager. That was the Franklin County Agenda. The third sheet in the pocket is the Columbus Tax Center Summary. That's on there in a bit. And then the final piece in the left hand is recommendations for 2020 Turk. What will 2019 city document. The right-hand pocket on the top is the consent agenda, followed by three consent review agendas, and then a copy of the City Council Turk preparation from the 2020 Turk. And then loose in the center are the minutes from the 2020 Turk. Those are also provided, the material, TIF report, and then the project status report, that we also call the pseudo-report. That's the J. thing that we need to sort to. So those are the materials. Over to you, Mr. Chairman, and to the fourth one.
Thank you very much, Bob. Our third item on the agenda is our minutes from 2020. Is there discussion related to those minutes? Seeing none, can I get a motion approved, please? Who, in a second as well?
Second.
Second, let's go ahead and take those in favor. Please signify approval by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed say no. Seeing none, the 2020 minutes have been approved. Moving on to agenda item number four. We have the Columbus Tax Center Summary and more bullet in the overview.
Excuse me, Paul, please. We have a technical difficulty. I'm working on the livestream right now. Please let me know if it's okay. I'm going to talk to the IT person.
Okay, why don't we just keep going?
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Summary of our portfolio for 2020. We had 86 enterprise zones and community reinvestment area agreements. 12,519 total jobs, which is 87% of our goal. You know, the one that I highlight is the new job creation. So 3,713 new jobs created, which is 58% of the goal. That's, I've been doing this for 10 years, and we've always been over 100%. So I think, you know, clearly, 2020 had a major impact on new job creation. We'll see that in the numbers a little bit, but again, you know, not something that we've seen in the past. So, you know, hoping it's a year anomaly. But, you know, important note, the retained jobs, 8,806 retained jobs is 111% of our goal, again, right about where we were expected to be with that one. 167 million payroll is 147% of our goal. You know, happy about the payroll numbers. And then $1.3 billion in real property investments, which is 118% of our goal. So everything's really tracking except for the new job creation. TIP districts, we have 88 districts. There's over $5.8 billion in projected investment, real property improvements. And we have over 346 million in key light service payments.
Any questions, Mark? Go ahead, I pose a question, move on to our next agenda item. The 2020 tax incentive review council recommendations and city follow-up outcome. Back up for Bob or something.
Thank you. So in that last document in the pocket, this is the overview. We did have one project in Delaware County, and we had some follow-up to do, so turn to page five. That document's the last page. So the follow-on from 2019, from the Turk. Just to give us off, it was from the Point of Flares Phase One and Point of Flares Phase Two, L. C. C. L. A. Agreement. To Turk recommendation to continue agreement now to send a letter to the Enterprise requesting the jobs plan. One process within the commitment of 780 million jobs. One. We didn't give a response time frame on that. But the letter was sent, six last year. I didn't even see the initial response, but I did have communication later on. We received the jobs plan from the 15th. Pretty sure those stayed on track. Last year, they were still in their job creation time frames. I was able to know the job creations were still within that. So if the submission of the letter satisfied the recognition, Turk. We'll talk about them here in a little bit. For that, we'll put a follow-up.
Any questions, believe it or not, follow-up item? Move on to our next agenda item then. Item number six, tax income and finance report.
Okay. Seth Ring here, of our staff, will move over that. We want to refer to the TIP project status report to the center of staff on page five, where the TIPS relate to the Olandangie Local Schools that develop their training courses are located and sets what we're talking about.
All right, that's the, still on the form, we still have three tests. I didn't know our county, but it was the Flares One, which was established in 1996. And we have the Flares Two and Flares Three tests that were established to 2015 and 2018. I wanted to bring attention the fact that for the Flares Ones that we established in 96, last December, we have legislation to extend that to an additional 30 years, which now that's it for Flares One, we'll talk to 2017. Part of the deal, dealing that is the developer did commit to a minority and win business contracts for part of the work. We, the city also is getting portable housing from the developer for their projects. And we are also retaining the percentage of those extension debt revenues as part of that 30-year extension we did under private finance code. So then to kind of go into a summary of the numbers on the spreadsheet that Bob pointed out, I want to point out that these are mostly for Flares One and Two as the Flares Three test still is not receiving any revenue at this time, as we're waiting for proofing from the state. So just kind of quickly look at the numbers. We had original projected 30-year private investment of around $50 million. At the end of last year, we reached almost $600 million in private events investment. Our cumulative third payments deposited into the Flares One Two, their bonds, is around $51 million, of which we spent about $23 million. Last year alone, for Flares One and Two tests, we received about $5 million service payments, which we expended about $2.2 million. And then just to kind of highlight some of the things that that $2.2 million was, Fermi Drive was approved the last year, that about $1.2 million of cost. And then we also approved the public garage spaces for those point Flares Phase One garage. Those costs were almost $11 million, but they're bond funded, so they're just making smaller debt service payments each year. That's the summary of the Flares One, Two, and three tests for Delaware County.
Any discussion on the report?
I have some question, because I think when you guys extended that tip, or not, all the harm is like untainted. Thinking about this, I was checking. Thought it was dead, either we had to work. Fell over, but I haven't heard anything about that. So I don't know if all this is news or if you guys know what I'm talking about.
So I think, yeah, we continue to work as well on the agreement. And it's definitely a part of what we're planning to incorporate into it. So very, we could touch base after the meeting, I don't know where I think it is.
Okay, perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, comments? I get a motion, put it up, the report.
Salute.
Jason. All those in favor of accepting the report, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. If that report is accepted. Moving on to agenda item number seven, agreement for individual review. Are there two agreements on the agenda?
Yes. Well, thank you. So here we want to catch up that big screen report. Page six. We'll look at agreements number two, eight, three. First one is the Point of Flares Phase One, Point of Flares Phase Two, and Olandangie Local Schools. Maybe the investment, maybe on agreement. This is about 100% of 10-year commitment. The payment on Phase One is running from 2018 to 2017, so we're going to get a agreement. Space one project. Phase Two is currently under construction. A little background on the project. It was the construction of a series of buildings, any speculative office space. Always wanted a mixed-use building. Approximately 177,000 square feet, with two associated spaces, parking garages. And then we made site improvements, wider drive. Overall, planned development subject to change based on market conditions. So the Phase One has been finished. Phase Two is under construction. There's also a residential component of 380, that's 31,000 square feet of retail space and hotels as well. And the hotel, the retail, and the residential units are not made, so. Lot of space. So there was a retained job commitment of 177. New job commitment by 2020 of 708. So 2020 was their final year. Job creation. Their payroll amendment was over $35 billion. Their real property investment for them was $15 million. Where we are, private investment, Phases One and Two, quarter fifty-three, or two million in rent, which is 354% attainment. New jobs for the final year was of 232. Only several good names, that's 50% of that. Their new job payroll was 23 million. It's 51% attainment. We did have reported four retained jobs from one of their tenants, Capac Rail. The other tenant, company called Anthem. So those are what the other jobs are. They reported $1.9 billion in construction payment. So that was on page two. So the situation there is that they have 574 new jobs. Last place, 708 jobs. So they're low, and they've got 177 potential. Now, the jobs from Anthem relocated on Westbury Road, so they were considering by the way, relocated for that segment. So we have to count them as new Columbus for the per se of Now, we did revenue share, the whole occasion of the schools, the amount of still attributed $8,000 based on the 232 jobs, construction payroll. So in future years, take into account the 177 retained jobs then. So what will happen? Let's say that was with these current numbers. What we would do is, is take the oldest 177 jobs from Anthem as a benefit. Which then will compare their, their new job. So what I think we'd like to do to recommend is to send the letter to the Enterprise and get request for jobs plan, and then we'll process retaining the seven that remain to recreate a jobs group. See what the variance is. Because I think it's going to be a challenge. Now, Phase Two's coming on. Phase Two. And that really will take up 500. But that was already.
Any discussion regarding the recommendations, but send the correspondence to the Point of Flares. So are we saying that, are they saying that they're low or are they under because of space? They already come, and they were looking to breathe.
I think, Jason, it's two building, and one had opened. That was what we did, they're going on. The second one was both open. It was about a year before it did. And Bank of America has committed to occupy a part of the second building. I think they're already in. But given where we were last year, they have not occupied it. I think the construction delay was also a little bit COVID-related. So even when they opened, you know, Bank of America is not moving in. Right from 2020. So I think we want to see what happens when both buildings stabilize and then get a good picture of the job. That should be this meeting next year.
You sent a letter last week, and did they respond, or what was their response?
You know, I don't have their written response, but they did align with with the shares if they were on track, and then their, their job goals. And because this was the final year recommendation for a follow-up over this year. You know, like Mark was saying, what the point of view might be was the challenges that did everybody, and we'll talk about later, that their, the jobs rolling in, issues those too. The jobs will, will occupy that space and things to be done. So maybe the letter this year will just ask for the jobs plan. So we'll ask, how are we going to get that, so.
When a jobs plan, when the letter goes out, is there a recommendation for a percentage? It should be, or is that really up to the individual? And kind of come back and say, kind of based in the approach due to economics or something of that nature? Stuffing things?
Um. We just asked her, you know, how are we going to? Have five people do it normally, we have three of them. So with any, any job creation window, it's, it's, they say they're going to create a lot of jobs in two years, and they, you always have, in the agreement, and then the first year, and the second year. This one was just, since it was such a big project. They should job. If they're, if they say we're going to have 25 by the end of year one, and we have 15, it's not much of a red flag, but we will recommend that they go out and say, hey, you know, the city board has 25, you know, how are we going to get to 50 next year? Assurance, company, those sorts of things we have for. Yeah. You know, we can go back, that's great, and we see what they get next year. This being the final year. Kind of play, so the following year, we will just ask for jobs letter. Okay, so sometimes, it doesn't happen too often, sometimes if a project invite on too much to wait, and she, they say, well, we're going to create 500 jobs, and this council at the moment says, is this really a number to recover? This is what we're looking for. Sometimes they'll back that off. Sometimes we have a change of market conditions, something can't look the same. They're not able to do that. They ask themselves, well, would we have done this project, or less than the scope of the project, the investment, and house? Change it from, say, 100 jobs to 75. Sometimes in the past, we've ended the moves to modify that job, which is something we like to do, but sometimes made that adjustment just because of the conditions that was happening. And based on the basis where we have moved that construction. Well. So this is the, the recommendation is really, if you have one more year, just request for jobs there. And see enough, we'll show you out next year. So I'll pay report. Page one, we'll take for me.
But I think to your point, company is in the best position to identify when market conditions are moving there. So we don't want to presuppose some arbitrarily arbitrary decline down. We want them to articulate what the plan is, the market conditions, what might come forward, then spot identified, then we could look at alternative scenarios for agreements.
This is the last one, which actually is, we'll all be done at the building. So I know, say, two, Bank of America is committed, but it's not the full space in Phase Two. So if they're reporting back to us, hey, we're close to our jobs numbers, and we have 10,000 more square feet that we're trying to lease. You know, then you're like, okay, we have a plan here that we can hit these numbers. If it's like, yeah, we're fully leased, and these are the numbers. You know, then at that point, we come back to the Turk and say, hey, we're going to make a recommendation to change this, or whatever.
Great, thank you for that further information, I appreciate that.
So, so are there response, one, one, wrong?
I think, Dr. Lock, yeah, it's just really, in 2020, I think it was a factor of the construction taking longer, and then tenants not occupying the space as it was ready, right? So like, for next year?
Yeah. Yeah, we'll request the description of the business, the jobs being low, which one is what the plan is. But that's going to be changed.
On this particular letter, can we also ask them to respond to them? Another one, they could do, and I asked for one. We're trying to do that for this particular letter. Yeah, they think they did 90 days.
Okay.
They, we also have to respond. Even that.
We used to do 30, but. So. Say, give it 50 days. We usually also include in that that we Now, last year, we didn't give a timeframe, I think because of the nature, but because this year it's year five, they're out of window. We'll give them 50 days to respond, and we'll put in a letter that if they don't respond in 50 days, that we could be at risk. Seems to, like, like.
The instruction on the recommendation? If not, awake motion to adopt the recommendation of the Economic Development Team to send the jobs plan letter. Get a second, please. Type in, with all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say no. Have support for some of your recommendations? And then Bob, if you have any other recommendations for perspective for medical office development?
Yeah, I'll just maybe do that one with a quick. Good shape. The Flares Department of Law Office Development, L. C., is actually now Health Care Trust of America. This was a 75 cent 10-year agreement, it's a year six. That's running from 2014 to 2014, so that's just. Then involved construction of a medical office in Anguilla, towards surgery facility, approximately 45,000 square feet. Project began in February 2011, was completed by March of 2012. The new job amendment is 21, recreated by 2014. Associate payroll was $5,000, $1,000, no job retention. A real property investment, remember, was taking 22,5 million. So their report was that their private investment was 7.2 million. That's 87% attainment. That's on there in a second. New jobs were 45, it's 214% of the payment. Payroll was just over $3.9 billion, that's 382% attainment. There were 32 retained jobs reported, and the retained job payroll was 4.15. Now, the reason why there are retained jobs reported when there's no retention commitment is that if they tenant is into the building, and they are relocated between the single companies, any job that locates at the project site cannot be counted. So this project has four tenants. General Life Surgery Center, the Hand Center, End of Microsurgery, and Innovative Medical Solutions. And so the tenants, all the joint, the Enterprise, the main prize, that's the first name. I would prove it to you on these tenant reports, and they know, rock, it's a day. So if they employ me, then there's a higher date for the Rockwood State, it's published. They also know how many employees were there when they relocated. But when we give them 20, they always be paying all jobs. So they will job retention based on all of that, they that's not how it works. So because of That's not how it works, so because of how the forty was, what we came about, let's call it thirty two. So the revenue shared with the school district. Probably six. Um, private investment is has been. Well, this project's sixth year. It's eighty seven percent entertainment. It's considered entertainment of seventy five percent or more. The clients is a. Provision of the state code and it's in all the agreements. Uh, that actually says twenty three year rolling average. Yes, as long as they can get seventy five percent of the movement. So. Even though they they didn't hit their late twenty million dollars. They did for the rest of seventy two, it's eighty seven percent, so we consider that. And. The other way to look at this, at least one of these is separate from them. It's just not one thing, we're not looking, only on jobs, only on the rest of the big picture. So. If we look at the entire picture, the really good job, not every job, it's not. Building and it's great facility there. So city's recommendation to continue.
Discussion on the recommendation. And so what we're looking at, what I don't think that I heard. Have a look at the private investment.
Yeah.
We hired.
I think they anticipated their construction across the. Or that they. And level the best. Drop the project because they had a bit of. Um, in twenty ten to twenty eleven. And it just, it just didn't spend as much. And because of the eighty seven percent. And it's built and I.
The additional discussion, question. I get a motion to. Approve the recommendation sent to city council.
I want.
And second. All those in favor of sending the motion of recommendation to city council, please say aye. And those say no. Through. Do we need to approve the consent agenda?
Do we need that?
Do we need to approve the consent agenda?
Um, there are no projects on consent agenda for that.
But I don't think.
Yeah. We've always. Like this project here, we, this would be on the consent agenda. If.
Thirty additional older new business. See, can I get a motion to return this?
Okay.
Second.
Turk is a third. Kind of.
Thank you.
Twenty twenty one Columbus Tax and Senate Review Council meeting, today is August twentieth, twenty one. I'm Michael Sondiano, I am the Franklin County Auditor, which makes me the statutory chairperson for the Turk. At this time, I'll ask each Turk member, it doesn't need to be say their name, we didn't see their representative. Now, Franklin County Auditor, I guess I'll move my light, very burdensome, sorry.
Quinn Harris, Deputy Director of Development for the City of Columbus.
I'm Mark LaDeen, I'm the Economic Development Administrator for the City of Columbus.
I'm Bob Jones, President and Manager of Economic Development.
And Seth Brean, I'm the Chief Manager for the City Columbus Economic Development.
Michelle Morrison, Development Forum Coordinator, CEO of Columbus Economic Development.
Phil Lock, yeah, I don't know where to get on this.
Paulie, the TD.
Ada Dyer, Designee for Columbus City Council.
Jason Jenkins, Designee for Mayor Gendersaw.
Eric Brown, Columbus City School.
Thank you all, I don't have Mr. Newman or any of these himself.
Ling, you can turn it on.
Our, thank you all for being attendance, remains coordination to put this meeting together. Are there any additional stakeholders speak from the public or media persons that wish to announce themselves independent for purposes of the record?
Chairman, I think we should allow the other school board representatives to introduce themselves as well.
The other school board members would like to introduce themselves as well, or their.
Any blue's try to talk for protecting.
And screen be tried to refer technology education.
The little bag is still bringing up Lincoln High Schools.
Mike, we're link to have a treasure and have Jefferson School.
Oh, Chip Summy, treasure to broke apart Madison, does it mean?
Scandal part, Columbus City Schools, try to.
City, your city schools.
Have anyone else that would like to ask all the first caller? Seeing that I appreciate again everyone's flexibility, it is a different setting. Third year I got them a clean, your chair and Turk and third different layout that we've had. So appreciate everyone's patience. We will move to the folder content review, which is first upon the agenda, and like to run through the folder contents of the City of Columbus and first for review today.
Thank you, everyone has a packet of material, sort of view, probably looks through it already a little bit. We will be referring to documents in the folder throughout the meeting. Content location which folder. Uh, the left hand pocket is the agenda. The City of Columbus, Clanton County Agenda is the second sheet. The Columbus Tax Institute Summary is the third sheet. Uh, and then the fourth package in the back. That pocket is the recommendations for twenty twenty Turk. For four year twenty nineteen and city follow up, that's just a little. Little uh, nomination from last year. The right hand pocket is today's consent agenda. And there's the three review agendas. Very bad that pocket is the company out to the city council resolution. Guarding exposed load Turk. And then loose in the center are the minutes from last year's meeting. Tiffron Port. The what we call the school report or the. Door for twenty project status report that we will refer to again. Any of them, maybe.
Thank you, we're going to do that next, open the review last year's minutes dated August seventeenth, twenty twenty. Are there any changes or corrections? Here in silence, is there a motion to approve the next?
It'll move.
Been moved by. Phil, second of. City, all those in favor, please take a vote of aye.
Aye.
Same time for the opposition. And then the best, next meeting will move into the economic development. Presentation of tax incentive summary for full performance review and turn over to the gentleman.
Thank you, Chair. In twenty twenty, City Columbus had eighty six enterprise zone and community reinvestment area agreement. Reported job total was twelve thousand five hundred and nineteen. This is eighty seven percent of the goal. Uh, you know, noting new jobs was three thousand seven hundred and thirteen, new job fifty eight percent of the goal. So a little color on that, since I've been doing this for eight years, I think it's the first time we've been below one hundred percent. Uh, you know, I think twenty twenty provides us a. You know, fairly obvious reason on why new job creation was kind of off the mark, but it's something that we'll really monitor for next year. The retained jobs, we're at eight thousand eight hundred and six, which is a hundred and eleven percent of our goal. And interestingly, the annual payroll was a hundred and sixty seven million, which is a hundred and forty seven percent of the goal. So tracking on everything but the new jobs. Um, and then we saw one point three billion in real property investment. Tip districts, we have eighty eight tip districts in twenty twenty. And over five point eight billion has been invested in real property improvements. And we have three hundred and forty six million female service payment in twenty twenty.
Thank you for the presentation, are there any questions or comments? Seeing that one next review and vote on the tip reports, we have multiple stakeholders. So I will do my best to announce half the full school issues, so I think everyone would also bow along here to the presenters. Seth, can you be presenting?
Mr. Chairman, we skip. Uh, agenda point number five.
I apologize. And we will move to Mr. Jones, Columbus Enterprise Zone Manager. So staff report on last year's Turk recommendations, the city follow up now.
Just to sit and let Seth go, but we better figure it out that we skipped it, so. Um, so in the left hand pocket, the one on the bottom is the. Recommendations and follow up. Uh, there's several pages here. First couple pages being the very conservative. Um, we had three review agendas last year, the first one was, uh. We had twenty five agreements. That reportedly. But once they did report, they were found to be a little compliant. So the recommendation was to send out letters, specifically in force, timely and accurate reporting. There were twenty five agreements, first twenty one on that list were from the City School District. Uh, number twenty two was from Columbus and Indiana Jefferson combined. Uh, agreement number twenty three was Indiana Jefferson, twenty four was failure. And twenty four was coming to local, and twenty five was failure. City filed with the recommendation, Turk will send out those letters to all of those agents. The next dealt with review agenda B. And these were based on incomplete or I haven't reported. There were fourteen agreements across three school districts. Uh, nine agreements from Columbus, there were two agreements for, uh, for Madison. And. So. They're listed there, uh, one through fourteen. We sent out letters. Recommending that. To follow up. So I'm going to go through these, actually. Let's start with you, Columbus, recommendation, those are. A bunch. Leave this really quickly, our supply, it was an incomplete report, did not report their destruction payroll. Turk recommended to continue and send the enterprise a letter requesting full reporting. Construction jobs and payroll reported in sixty days, received a letter relating to the unit's dissolution. Uh, city sent the letter. Received, we delivered confirmation. However. No construction job, report was submitted. If no, their disagreement is on review agenda C this year, so we're going to talk about that again. E W High Street, E W Hubbard High, that's a point before, did not submit their report from, was a report. Recommendation of sending a letter, requesting to report in sixty days, or the unit or this dissolution, so we sent the letter. The report was submitted, private enterprise. So. Remembered the clients' request, and they are on the consent agenda next year. Fargo Specialty Vehicles did not control last year, but foundation to continue. Sent the enterprise a letter requesting full reporting in sixty days, so this is the solution. Received communication from the enterprise in September of the next year, requesting that it be resolved. They have not explored the project, so the unit was dissolved and removed, it was taken on. And no, before the materials were distributed in. So that agreement is no longer. Brandon, nineteen one date row LLC, not reported. Requesting to continue, send the letter requesting. Or in a minute, in this dissolution, so we sent the letter. Delivered confirmation was received. We began communication regarding the reported. In November, continuing on to the area of twenty twenty one, but the school report was received. It's definitely, so there we go. We got the other review agenda B this year. Virgin, virtually Columbus, the complete report, the rest of the report. Uh, but we sent him a letter, he trusted me with the report. Days, this is the solution, sent the letter. Materials were received in November twenty twenty, then on the consent agenda. I have power company, it was an incomplete report, no construction payroll, and we want company investment report. Recommend to give the agreement, send the enterprise a letter requesting full reporting. In sixty days, or this is the solution. Sent the letter. Station regarding this request, uh, began in November, the request of materials received in January, four. They are on the new agenda A. Rickett back the West corner, two, three, number one. And Rickett back the West corner, cheese be number two, they're on the West. Initially, thought it was incomplete, we actually had a complete report. Um, further information of continue and send the letter requesting. But we found what they actually wrote again, that was a mistake on our part. We displaced the report, which is exactly what happened, but we had it, so they were actually a little fine with. The last one for the city Columbus is the review hotel, they did not report, so. Cheated the agreement, sent him a letter, requesting full reporting, or we will, uh, this is the solution. They are on. Agenda C this year, they never did see the report, we're going to talk about that later. I don't think I'll know that, we're going to leave it. There was three agreements for Roadport Madison. Involved in flow of useful storage and course. Agreement number one, number two, and number three. Agreement number one, another of them reported. Last year was the final year for number one agreement, but the Turk recommended to simply allow agreement to expire. So there was no letter for something. Number two, number three. Recommendation to continue, send him a letter, requiring. Agreement was dissolved, so they sent a letter. Confirmation was received, if ever did receive a report. But the agreement's on the new agenda C, we actually have some good news about these guys. Talk about that later. Time for the new agenda. A failure, there were two agreements, both out there, a very true, Roxanne. Look, just on Roxanne, number four, number four. Three. Pretty much the same, uh, we need it for reporting. Excel version of jobs and payroll report, the reason why we need. The actual spreadsheet is so that we sort them with the numbers and jobs. And all we get is is paper. I can't look at that, but I really don't know how many jobs. What retain job, old jobs are, so we asked them for, you know, the spreadsheets. We did receive the reports finally in March of this year. Roxanne, number three, is on the consent agenda this year, Roxanne, number four, we'll be on the agenda P. Mentioned that. And then for full review, last year we go. And then for full review, last year, there was eleven agreements. The first seven on that list, we city Columbus, the deal was eight of nine. Our Indiana Jefferson, number ten, was Hillier. And then we wanted to clear the job of the Delaware County. So for the city Columbus recommendation, sure, we're trust the jobs plan and the real property report. Per quote continued. Requested. They were supposed to attain forty new creative jobs by two thousand and twenty-one. They also asked for a commercial space of only private invested number. There was no response timeframe on this. We sent the letter. No response was received. About the review agenda B this year. Brother Building. Per quote continued, sent a letter requesting a jobs plan. Applying their room floor jobs. And also through providing commercial space of investment. What was happening on a couple of these is maybe reporting total real property investment on a mixed-use project. So a mixed-use might have some downpour retail, have a lot of residential apartments. And some flawed space. We're only interested in investment related to commercial space. So there was ten million dollars commercial office investment that we're going to repair themselves when we invested forty million dollars. But just not much of that is important. For that. Then the response was we still wanted to go and then we do a G. Clarus Ventures Solutions and Partners. Requested to continue to amend the agreement, so to add other job creative entity. Yes, your response within sixty days. Sent out the letter, we friendship with the enterprise. Requested the chair was in January this year. We think that got authorized by city council, amended. Well, it's been passed in July. Add the mission of job creative entity, which provides the language required for job creation. Then and we added language required to the future enterprise, the shared increments. So that event process is a process. We're going to try to straighten this up for a couple of years. So that was for last year, but it was the same then. We'll review agenda B this year. But they didn't comply with the request, everybody gives a shit. Former Bolsonin, K D L Properties, active time of reporting. Continue. We've got a clear on the job numbers. Again, we accept the gross amount of flying in terms of the agreement, but also to send them a letter in time of the report was accurately explained. Whatever was sent, we're going to go there under consent agenda this year. Public Park Place. The jobs plan and real property investment report. We're going to continue and send a letter to the enterprise requesting jobs plan. But it consists of before you create a job budget plan and provide a commercial space of investment. We sent the letter. Permission was received. Under the whole, the sponsors, the city development jobs. Set agenda this year, we know their jobs. Shave. So that's what we know. Didn't respond obviously. Like I told you, we're getting the challenge. Money to national bank. So we're doing a new jobs plan. We have the back to time reporting. We're going to continue, send a jobs plan. Also, we're going to double the days. You have a new job, you have a trade with each. reminder about the parts, active plan and reporting. Send the letter. Denver. And give the patient a help that bird. It was all that communication that this was about the burden of job creation. We're going to see what results from the cycle. We did and they are on actually. So that's the report of Columbus. Two agreements to Indiana Jefferson. Two at the airside projects out by the airport, airside one LLC and airside two. Airside one. Actually, we've requested jobs plans for both of them both. Send jobs plans. West, there was no response timeframe. See, no responses received. However, airside one. They're doing really good. The jobs were there this past year. So we can set agenda this year. As is for airside two, their jobs will shave. So they don't consent. The other city school district, there was one agreement, means per solution. Then yes, the investment. Jobs plan and real property report. Continue, send the enterprise a question, jobs plan. And provide a correct or unauthorized due response time thing. Sent the letter. Response received and they are on the review agenda B this year. With the jobs, continue to be able to blow something that so that was it. Hence, it was also
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments?
Can you stand up and mount your name just so they can hear maybe on my side when we talk?
Okay. Felicia Robbie, group for Madison. I wanted to motion that we remove agenda C R two for a separate vote from consent.
There is a motion on the board to move C R two from the consent agenda. Is there any second? Which one is good? Can you clarify which one that is? They threw everyone off.
Sorry. This is Columbia. What's orange? It's number eight. That's the C R two. What grade names?
Okay. The word looking at it looks like it's number ten or one.
Are you going for the rich agenda with the phone?
That's Turk session two, ten one, twelve thirty.
All right.
It's on.
It's seventy and seventy.
It's three, but it's eight.
Okay. So we will talk about those separately. We do get to that point of the review agenda.
So would you be comfortable holding on the motion for when we get to that part in the agenda? And potentially go out from the Senate back?
Because the twelve related agreements will be, they're on the full review agenda.
I'm sorry.
The twelve relief kind of goes on the say this on the full review agenda. So they will be reviewed separately.
Oh.
So they are not even sent again?
Well, no, they're on the review. They're under, under consent agenda. So point number eight, they're on page three of your agenda. If point eight is sent in, you will on Columbus City School District. We go through the review agendas first. And the agenda three. Here on page four. There are two agreements. So we'll talk about those in the future later.
So would those be a separate vote then?
Yes, yes.
We had a motion, didn't hear a second. So we're going to move on. Are there any other questions or comments? Or would we space for feedback? Here you are. I'm going to get the set. I'm so excited, Seth. So here we go. Seth will provide a review and vote on the tip reports with all the school districts. As I mentioned, I will do my best to be watching Seth mention which school districts are going to be part of the status. Except for many much. It's Seth. But yes, they're going to do that and I'll go.
So what we'll do is we're going to start on page four, the tip report.
Is there a microphone if you can turn on your box? The mask is making it harder to put it very.
These microphones do not contribute to the life speed they only for two.
Yeah, I think the school district members can be having a hard time here. Might have a voice.
Hey, so page four of the tip report. Let me ask you turn to that. We will move through the report by school district grouping and set who we get. Eighteen tips. Number sixty, we're in two and eight steps through eighty-eight. So we'll set for presenting room. My back to me and the chair. Last question, we'll vote and take the tips at the room. There'll be several opportunities for questions at both on all these. So first up is Columbus City School District, Columbus City, South Western City, and Falls.
So this is the old element of tip. We initially created this in twenty fifteen and the city expanded it in twenty nineteen. So the numbers I'm going to go over are only for the twenty fifteen parcels. So we're still waiting for approval from the state in the twenty nineteen parcel. So currently our projected thirty-year private investment is about one hundred and twenty-one million, of which we've attained at the last year about twenty-three million. Humanitively, we received tip-ons of almost seventy thousand dollars, which we've already spent all of them. And then of that six, almost seventy thousand, we received fifty-seven thousand of that last year in twenty twenty. And as I just said, we have already spent all that money. What the seventy thousand dollars is going towards is a public sanitary line and waterline extension along Dillon Road and Triggy Road with cost of around one point five million dollars. That's it for that.
But thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? If there's no further review, like to question, accept the report, find any complaints. It's been moved in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same sign for the opposition and any objections? Or is it set?
Next up is one tip in Columbus City, Dublin City, and Falls.
This is our problem tip around the mall in West Columbus. We have a projected thirty-year private investment around seventy-six million, which we've obtained fifty-seven million. We've currently received almost fourteen million dollars of revenue. I spent all of that last year alone. We received five hundred and five thousand, which we spent all of that. That financing.
Thank you. Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? There are no further reviews, like to motion to accept the report, find any complaints.
They're moving.
They're moving. Second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same sign for the opposition and any objections? A report. Six seven.
Okay, next up is Columbus City and the Jefferson City and Eastland Fairfield.
So these are our Easton and New Easton tip. The original Easton tip was created in nineteen ninety-six. Last year, the city passed legislation in November to extend that original thirty-year term for the ninety-six tip to twenty fifty-seven. The developer identified a number of public infrastructure improvements that still need to be completed, as you're aware. But Easton is quite a bit of undeveloped land yet that they are planning to develop over its term. So to quickly go over the numbers, they have a projected thirty-year private investment of about one point four million dollars, which we obtained almost one point two million. We've received humanitively almost a hundred million, which we've spent humanitively, almost ninety-three million. Last year alone, we received nine point eight, nine point nine million dollars. And we spent last year almost eight point five million dollars from the tip-ons. I believe last year was the first year we received revenue from the New Easton tip. Are what our costs are going towards? Are they completed to completely public garages up there? They've also done quite a bit of new road construction for their urban district. That completes the report.
Thank you for the report. As mentioned, we're going to take part of the vote. Are there any questions or comments from the members of seeing no further review, like to motion to accept the report and find it in the box. Second.
Okay.
It's been moved to second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same sign for the opposition and any objections? The report is accepted.
Okay, next up, Columbus City and the Jefferson City, these three there will CTS, high school, local, and CTS career.
This is our East Broad Commercial Tip originally legislated in two thousand and five. So we didn't have initial thirty-year private investment, but as of end of last year, the city has projected the actual payment to be about thirty-six million dollars, which we've received almost all about three point seven million dollars. And we've currently spent about seven hundred and thirty-five thousand dollars. Last year alone, we received about three hundred and two thousand dollars, which we spent last year alone, three hundred and seventy-eight thousand. And what that is going towards is the city is currently working on design for the widening of East Brown Street from I two seventy-two, rounds for the all the road. That completes the report.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? Here you are. Is there a comment for proofing? Thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same sign for the opposition and any objections? Four to six seven.
Okay, next is Columbus City, Madison, local, Quinton, local, around the city. This is a proposal suggestion.
This is our fresh road tip near I seventy. We did not panel a thirty-year private investment production, but as a blast heater, attainment is about seven point eight million. We humanitively received one hundred and eighty-five thousand, which six to five thousand was received last year. Today, we have not spent any of these tip-ons. That completes the report.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? If you don't prefer to, like to tell permission to accept the report and find it in the box.
As a
they're moving. Are you my second?
Sure.
Thank you. They're moving to second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same sign for the opposition and any
Okay, next is Columbus City.
So this was a new tip of the city that is slated and created last year. It's a non-school forty B tip with a hundred percent intention for thirty years. It's near American Airport, Pennsylvania. It's practically two areas. One part of the tip is by High Street and Parsons, north of Tyneville. Down Raceway. And the other part of it is south of Royal Road. And then it goes towards a state route three seventeen. Part of the tip sits below that road. We've had a hundred and twelve million warehouse development in the area along Royal Road. We have a hundred and twelve million warehouse development in the area along Royal Road and then a potential three hundred million dollar data center for the High Street and Parsons Avenue areas. Currently, these service payments are expected to be used to widen Royal Road and add turn lanes, also a potential roundup for State Route three seventeen and also Collins Drive, which currently exists north of State Route three seventeen and be extended all the way to Royal Road. Another residential utility work that's needed. So that's a total project is thirty year, total projected thirty year private investment of about four hundred and twelve million dollars. As I said, this is a new tip, so there are no new numbers to report on.
Thank you for the report. Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? We even have further review, like to commission to accept the report.
Then move. Second.
Then move in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same sign for the opposition and any objections?
Next up is Columbia City, we were all going to claim local, Eastern Fairfield, CTS, and Swat Tip.
This is another new tip that was created around the city of Columbus in twenty twenty. It's a non-school forty B tip with a hundred percent extension for thirty years. It's in the vicinity of North Hamilton Road and the State Route one sixty-one interchange. Our this tip overlaps partly with some of our existing tips. And we removed some undeveloped parcels from our Dublin Randall, North and South tips. Add a couple additional parcel that had never been said before and created this tip. As you can see, we have a projected thirty year private investment of about seventy-five million. That's going towards a new, let's say, office building that's as well as their traditional retail and a mixed-use development around the Hamilton Road. And then these visitor's payments are expected to self-finance a new road called Central Boulevard, ramps on that one sixty-one and North Hamilton Road in addition to the widening of North Hamilton Road. And then there are the possibility that this could go towards additional public infrastructure improvements depending on tip revenue going forward.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? Any number of review, like to commission to accept the report, find any complaints? Then move. I'll let you have one motion every year. Thirty seconds. I'll say, all right, it's been moved in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same sign for the opposition.
Next is Columbia City and Westerville City, this is one tip.
This is our more throat tip. Did have an original thirty year private investment of about fifteen million, which we've projected an statement of almost eight trillion dollars. Imotively, we received over five point seven million dollars, which we've spent almost one point eight million. Last year, we received about four hundred and ninety-five thousand and expended five hundred and sixty-three thousand. Our expenditures are currently going towards center clear and a sidewalk project.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? There are no further reviews, like to commission to accept the report. Then move in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine.
Okay, this next groupie is the Anderson City and Eastern Fairfield, CTS. There are two tips.
These are our loose end incentive or residential tip, our loose end commercial tip, also in the East Broad area by two seventy. We did not have an original projected thirty year private investment, but as currently a hundred and forty-five million dollars in the tips. The two tips that we received about nine two, nine point two million dollars, of which we have spent about seven point two million. And we received about one point two million dollars last year and then expenditure about five hundred thousand dollars. That concludes the report.
Thank you for the report. As the issue is two tip, but we want to vote. Are there any questions or comments? Here, like to commission to accept the report and find any complaints?
Second.
Then move in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine.
Hi. Next is Hilliard City and Falls, Career Tech Center, one tip.
This is our four trails tip that was created in twenty nineteen. We are still waiting for approval from the state. So there aren't any numbers to report as we haven't received any revenue and funded any revenue. Our original predicted thirty year private investment probably was about one hundred and ninety-seven million dollars.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? Do we have any questions here?
I'm receiving this.
It's been moved in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same sign for the opposition and any objections?
Next is Lincoln Heights Local and two tip, two tips.
We have two tips, the Whitenor Road Tip and the Whener M.I. Tip created in two thousand and two and two thousand and five along our East Broad corridor. That's it. Our original predicted thirty year private investment was about one point five million, which we think we've attained one hundred and eight million dollars. Imotively, we've received almost eleven million dollars and expended almost six point four million dollars. Last year, we received about eight hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars and expended one hundred and ten thousand. That one hundred and ten thousand went for Hartman Acquisition and the East Broad or that includes the report.
Thank you for the report again. Can test one vote. Questions or comments? Here you are. Question for approval?
Thanks, Rudy.
Second.
Then move.
Second.
I did believe in the second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Any objections? Or is it?
Next is New Auburn and Plainlawn, and Eastern Fairfield, CTS.
This is our Dublin Randall South Tip in, it's near Hamilton Road and State Route one sixty-one in northeast Columbus. We did not have a predicted thirty year private investment, but we projected that today is about thirty-two million dollars. Imotively, we've received almost five hundred and ninety-three thousand and spent off four hundred and seventy-one thousand last year. However, we only received about twenty-seven thousand and expended two hundred and nine, or two hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? Seeing that, like to commission to accept the report, find any complaints? Then move in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same sign for the opposition, only if. Or is it?
Okay, next is Reynoldsburg City and Eastern Fairfield, CTS.
This is our East Broad diminution tip. We did not have a front projected thirty year private investment, but we obtained at the end of last year about sixty-five million dollars. Imotively, we've received three point seven million, of which five hundred and forty-eight thousand roughly came in twenty twenty. To date, we have not expended any of these tip bonds, but as I mentioned before, the city is currently looking on a widening of East Broad Street and this four foot.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? Here you are. Like to commission to accept the report. Second. Then move in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same position. Any objections?
Okay. Last one on this group is Wouldn't Can Say, who cares?
This is our Buffalo Parkway and Crosswood Tips. Collectively, we had a thirty year private investment of almost nineteen million, which we obtained over thirty million dollars at the end of last year. Imotively, we've received about two point four million dollars, which five hundred and eighty-five thousand came from tip revenue in twenty twenty. We've spent to date about one point two million dollars, which our expenditure last year was about twenty thousand. Now it's just for the Buffalo Parkway, just to take for the road instruction of proof. That concludes the report.
Thank you for the report again. Success for the votes. Are there any questions or comments? Even further review, like to commission to accept the report, find any complaints? Then move in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same sign for the opposition? Or is it?
Just would like to end the goal of moving forward. We're only going to need Columbus, Anna Johnson, Columbus and Kelly's Service, something. Fairfield, Career Tech, Falls. We're getting one back in the room. I think I have a district that I did not read. Go home, go back to work, or whatever you want.
They can also stay if they want.
That's their choice.
But I do think you are a holiday party. Next, we will move to review and vote on tip report for Quincy School, which is real. Sixty-seven tips, she'll be one of those. Don't know which one is going to be presented. I don't know what to do.
Seth and Seth will present one tip report.
So we'll talk about the total numbers for all sixty-seven tips that are imotively in twenty twenty. Numbers were, we'll also highlight a little bit of some of the public infrastructure projects and the costs that we did last year. But I'm going to start off by talking about the vibrant tips that we created on the school district. The first one is the Grammy Phase Two Tip. That's in East Franklinton, a non-school forty B tip with a hundred percent extension for thirty years. We took these parcels from our East Franklinton Tip. It's a expected hundred and twenty million dollar mixed-use development. And the tip revenues are going to contribute to paying for public spaces and a garage in addition to community development charges and property. The next tip that was created is the Madison High Street Tip. This is in downtown Columbus. We pulled these parcel from our downtown tip that's a non-school forty B tip. Again, it's a hundred percent for thirty years. This tip is located on High Street between Day and Long Streets. And it's projected that we're going to have a seventy-one million dollar redevelopment, which will include apartments and public spaces and a garage. Third tip we created last year was also in downtown, like the Madison High Street Tip. It's a non-school forty B tip for a hundred percent exemption for thirty years. This one is on East Broad. No, I don't want to mention name, but it's the PNC Gilbert Tip, which is where the PNC Tower is and then the Gilbert Building is to be constructed up a box to the east. Those are a hundred and thirty-five million redevelopment. And it's expected that the tip revenue will help pay for public spaces and a garage, improving existing elevated public walkway and creating the public sunken park closet. Our fourth tip that was created last year is our Southern Peninsula Tip, which is right across the river from us. It's a non-school forty B tip with a hundred percent exemption for thirty years. And this is a hundred million mixed-use development with offices, hotel and multi-bancy, including workforce settlement. The tip service payment in addition to community development charges are going to go towards street improvements, particularly a new street called Highwater, out in the south of Broad Street in the middle of the development. Final tip that was created in Columbia School District is our Stadium forty-one tip. This is a non-school forty-one tip and it's named a hundred percent extension for thirty years. It's currently in the vicinity of the Nationwide Boulevard, terminates at Amont Anthony River. We took these parcels from our existing Jaeger Tip to project a hundred million dollar mixed-use development and the tip service payments in addition to new development charges are going towards debt financing from the project. That concludes our vibrant tips. Going to give a summary of our then of our existing portfolio. It had a projected thirty year private investment of I guess that's twenty-nine billion dollars, which we've obtained five billion at the end of last year. Our cumulative service payments are about two hundred and twenty-four million dollars, which we've spent about one hundred and seventy-eight million today. Last year in twenty twenty, we received about twenty-four point five million dollars and expended about eighteen point five million dollars. Some examples of public infrastructure improvements that we did with the sixty-seven tips are we are working on the connection for for short street behind the Kroger and Gruri District. We are also working on design of a new public park in northeast Columbus. In addition to working on design of Hamilton, North Hamilton Road and widening that. And then a final sample is the Third Avenue improvements off of Amont Anthony River was also completed. And that concludes our summary of the sixty-seven Columbus, these four tips.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? If there's no further review, like to commission to accept the tip report. Then move. Second. Then move in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same sign for the opposition and any objections? Stitches. Thank you. Report is accepted. C R A report. We were being voted on the status of C R A being voted on. So the group explosion, one vote from all this care reports. So look forward to it.
Okay, so that's point eight of the agenda. You run through your sentence review for the non-sixteen agreements. I'll be twenty-one agreements. First up is the consent agenda. Consent agenda is agreements that are considered in compliance with terms within each agreement. The city will run the man maybe should do agreements within each school district or noted as it's all. So I'm going to ask you to refer to your consent agenda sheet in the packet. On this consent agenda sheet, there are three columns on the left. First column of gray, those numbers are simply the numbers on the total consent agenda. The second column B is the number within the individual school district. And then column C is the number in force odds on the school or in physicality. One of these payments on the big screen. So first up, we're going to talk about the Columbus and the Anderson School District. This one agreement, a set that just gained the realty income properties agreement. So we reviewed. Price was important to terms in the game. Well, this is the only one.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? There are no further reviews. Like to question, accept the report. Then move.
Second.
Then move in second, although it's in favor of the sixty-five by voting nine. Same for the opposition and any objections?
Next is the Anderson City. There are three limits. There's side one, there's side two, there's side three. This side three is future, which means they are still within their job creation timeframe. Companies agreements were noted earlier, so not leaving their job commitments this year. But there's side two. But there's side two. How to creation of the limits, that's the. So, so that commands both who's the.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions? If there's no further review, like see, there's the second C R A report. Second, then move to second, although the paper please signify by going down. Any sign of the opposition and any?
Next on the uh consent agenda here, in the one agreement, in the Columbus School District. Insurance Company LLC, also known as Columbus Trust. That's the way, many, the other side assumption that could change the game. Is a huge project, we will store a whole lot of job creation timeframe and uh their numbers found in the book in the quarter twenty twenty.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions? Further review, like see question except the C R A report by any comments. Then move to second, although the paper please signify by going down.
Next on the consent agenda is uh seven projects for agreements. Government President agreements with the government city's industry. Highlighting products. All metal food, barter, have the green, we're supposed to all the one for internal, it was more supply and. So Mr. Duffy Oliver and this were uh future projects. They were all, I mean, applied in terms of their owners.
Thank you for the confirmation. Are there any questions or comments?
So just really quickly, since there's that note then. Said they're all in lines, why are they on this?
Um, what is the consent agenda? So I just.
Just roll like.
They're all, since there's seven of them, you know. Just. Just.
But the office. Thanks.
Additional question? Here you go for the review, like see, except C R A report by any comments. Second, then move to second, although the paper please signify by going down. Exactly, and then. And we're going to review it in the view board.
So, um, direct your attention to the U and J B. Prophecies, all the ones D. Dance. There are seven agreements um that are not what we say is good. So. This is a little unique for this year. For the four-year twenty twenty. Based on the disruption related to the COVID pandemic. These agreements have been placed on the U and J B. If job payroll or investment numbers are low, we have records. The first section given seven on line eight-five C one. Says the term may take into consideration any fluctuations in the business and the. Um, we consider that uh. Things associated, we've talked about a little bit before, with the pandemic, with uh. What we call the job creation or move to a room with investment project. Or associated payroll from the jobs. Is related merely to. The public, it's a very unique regard. They had a similar situation back in two thousand eight, two thousand nine. Through no fault of their own, allowing companies. Were not able to meet the job numbers. So it's sort of like a. Will so know, make it know that that fees were deficient. However. What we're gonna do with each case break is I'm gonna mention them where we are. Questions or payment, then we will probably press the the new school district, what we recommend to be. Considered based on, based on the situation. So the first group is the Hannah Jefferson Street District, there were two agreements. There's side four and there's side five. And on page five, the school report number six, fifty-nine. There's side four, there were loan jobs in payroll. Um, actually, there were no jobs. Does there, yeah. Not yet released the building. During the forty. As a side note, there's side four, uh, ten buildings been sold in a local company. Um, that manufactures more docs, yeah, so all, so all maybe that is the sort of. Uh, we are. Three, a assignment assumption and a uh, the state that never agreed for that. And so that means actually change and the job numbers change and. Some of the investments will change. So it's gonna be thirty-two over the beginning, but um. That agreement in its reform should, it should be. Now here's side five, um, construction is delayed, so the investment numbers are nonexistent this year. In construction phase, we're actually underway in the agreement to adjust their. Their construction window and their job creation timeframe out so that they can begin construction. Think it's like a year or next year. Which is, did not move forward there, so. So our recommendation of those girls is. Change here. Next on, on the nineteen situation.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments? See no further review, like see questions except the C R A report, finally comprised further of the recommendation of developments that regarding COVID. Then move to second, although the paper please signify. Any sign of the opposition?
Um, next is Hill County Schools, there's two agreements here. In the U and J B. Uh, Advanced Air Solutions, page five, number seventy-two. Their situation is low jobs, payroll. And box in number four, seven-six, page five, low jobs. So when the city recognizes that we go to here in this, children. Based on the development situation.
Thank you for the report and recommendation. Are there any questions? Here you go for the review, like see, questions except the C R A report by any comment for the recommendation of developments that regarding COVID. Then move to second, although the paper please signify. Same sign for the position. Today is. Where's the second?
Southwestern City School District, four agreements. Page six, ninety-four, number eighty-five, first the Jonesville, he's an urban distributor. Low jobs and payroll, and the state just can't direct. The job. So. Is that how we should be in this year? Based on the development.
Thank you for the report and recommendation. Are there any questions? Further review, like see, questions except the report by any comment for the recommendation of developments. Then move to second, although the paper please. Any sign of the opposition? And if you.
The uh final agreement here. Uh, what we tested the school, I feel it's S C A level. It says days last so fail. And I was like, just make it known, I should have mentioned that really long. Really, the vast majority of these agreements have always been previously compliant with John. Particularly the Louisiana. They had the job number for the payrolls. Eighteen years, they had to turn on one. And some people left, they were like, I see people that was in the year, but they had some good account numbers, don't their payrolls. Yeah. Can you? There's one further mention.
Thank you for the report and explanation. Are there any questions? You know, brother, like see, questions except the C R A report by any comment for the recommendation of developments. Second, then move to second, although the paper please signify. Hi. Next we will review the C R A group, overview of public storage.
Okay, this is where we do the full review, direct your attention to the U and J B C. All together here, through this school district, first up, this session was for Madison, so. Um, two agreements, the first one was low group, or scores number two. And the total we would have. It's on the page five, number seventy of the school report, for the president agreement, paying time for some ten years. Fourth year, we made an apartment in seventeen twenty-four six. The background on the project, because that involved the expansion of the old storage facility by adding. Sixty thousand square feet of freezer space. To a low job, preparing a political structure on New York Line. Project began uh towards the end of June twenty sixteen. Improvements were expected to be prepared by the. It really had no formal retained job for them, so they would actually point nine jobs. Some were bringing, that were really continuing both. They were looking for a quarterly agreement, the new job creation was two of the nineteen. There was probably my point, right down. Jobs, the investment, I would probably forward to giving the. Back up with the scam and we. Lowly full storage, number three, the stories may be the same. Number three is the next one, um, it was the third agreement, it was uh the expansion. Of the permanent cold storage facility by approximately a hundred and thirty-six thousand square feet of New York Drive. Um, it's a seventy-five percent tenure agreement. Finally, yeah, the YBMA. YBMA just set to begin no labor until twenty twenty, was spring beyond twenty twenty. Technically, we need the first year of YBMA, but there is bigger file, so. Their retained job momentum was thirty-one new jobs, thirty-one retained, twenty-two million dollars retained payroll. Five new jobs, thirty-two, two, associated shot payroll. And the investment in the group was suicide, it's still two million. So the situation on both of these is that last year they did not submit a report. And this year it was. Global League was purchased by a company called American, which is. Fortune. He had the most successful. Pass of the lots in Chicago. However. Last Friday, the city staff actually went out to the city and New York Drive. And uh. General Andrew was not there, but the informational rep, the the receptionist there who. He didn't submit any reports, papers appear funny now, and then we don't get on reports, they remember that there, these two. On Monday. Comes without no working. Because the company had been sold and people had left. Communication lacking internally. We didn't have any good contact information. I was contacted Monday. Been requesting. Copies of uh previous submissions that were made for. We provided them the fresh reporting materials for both. Both the nineteen and the twenty. And um, they are in the process. Waiting for the once, and somebody been back soon. So this week. And we're also. Also gonna submit a letter explaining the process of sale, when that happened, and. Twice the crew must be amended for signing assumption from globally to our home. So. For both of these, the city recommendation would be that the present reporting process and the assignment process is now underway. Change of the agreements, we report that. After we continue which agreements, this will be two separate recommendations. Report back to tutor, on his answer, you. Of course. Also to, in that letter, a reminder of what comes and after. Thanks to the board.
Thank you for the report. Are there any questions or comments to either the globally and full storage. Here, by any comment.
If we don't get a report, then. Now, it all depends on the recommendation of the curve, the the city's recommendation is. We're assuming. And that no matter what happens, we report back third. Next year, this. Just to what the situation was, and if they didn't report. Then we recommendation. But um, what time today? For the report, I saw down a uh, PDF scan of the. Report, bio twelve five, when they were number one, I think the sort of single baseline's were. Apparently, they did get a lot of information from. In terms of previous volume of income. Along with, with all the great report. Agreement number one, um, until the sale went through, it's always. The reporting. Along with that, there's good no filing, they have them on three, or more than exponentially. Along with the minimum. And um, they won't be able to find. So um. Pleasure of current to you. City's recommendation from the way. My mind, say, the report. What was on the agreement, yes, that's up for later.
There are other questions? When was the last time you actually had a report from either the new entity or globally? What what reporting here is last time actually?
Because last year was with the report. Projects. Did not receive an order and. We've been responding to try. And then the person expired at the end of. Age, so that's the recommendation, last year's trip was okay. Well, there's just expire, okay. Who left the force, so we've been trying. All year, never forget. Made that.
What if it said purchase?
Right.
We think they were purchased in uh. two twenty or twenty nineteen. I'm not really sure. We weren't necessarily advised, which is what found out. So back. But we didn't understand the discommunication. Now, the other thing is, is that the global league full storage is headquartered in Sioux City, Iowa. So the headquarters of Iowa has sent the first hurdle, but when that became. But and given for a while, the people in Iowa continued with the project, but then everything. Where are the quarters? And they were very apologetic about that, this was like news to them. And the corporation wasn't there, for a lot of the same. And so they were immediately provided. Of course.
So personally, I think we should, I think the tour should remember some type of deadline. It seems like, it seems like we went after them for a year, and then when we finally said we're about to resolve it, all of a sudden they run off. So it seems like they do better when there's a deadline. So just my own personal opinion, there should be some type of day deadline that they have to get reported to, since we haven't heard two reporting years now.
We don't hear from six days. We think that it certainly may have to do with recommendation. It's very reasonable.
Are there any other questions? Make sure you got all your votes answered.
I appreciate your questions that kind of were asked, I would just say from the school district perspective. We do have both five concerns about them, their agreement. I understand and recognize the sale may have valued some of the transfer of information, but then purchaser has an obligation to do their due diligence. And I appreciate a lot the idea of a deadline. I would probably still vote no. We are in the expanding growth area, and we, when we enter these agreements, we expect our partners to honor their commitments as well.
I'll call again.
Just to make a note on that. We sent the letter out. Previous year, we would send them out certified mail. But what I did last year, what we've been doing with a lot of things is, was I draft a letter, attach it to a email. Get delivered confirmation, get group confirmation, so I know that the letter was received. So if it goes out by email or if it goes certified mail, you know, I give back the part that says literally the mail next day. So that's the day they receive the letter is when the postcards, that's when they see the date. And then you see the letter on the first. Got to tell. And so we didn't. People, I was to resolve the agreement, people were back, and we were.
Any additional questions?
Is there money they're receiving for this process? Or the district or what I'm looking at here, looks like they're property investment, and all we deal with is tax evasion, something like that, correct?
Yes, this is a seventy five percent tenure agreement. I don't have previous news information on terms of. What we're sharing, which is. Their new job payroll numbers are fairly, in terms of their commitments, are fairly low. So it's unlikely that their payroll attributed to the new jobs created at these old projects would reach a million dollars. But the point was number two, the event that's been in place is twenty seventeen. So twenty twenty was the fourth year, so they had four years of foregone. Full well tax benefit, seventy five percent value of the improvements. It's seven. Day. So they had their full on, so.
Additional questions? Seeing them further review, like, start with global league full storage, number two. Is there any function? For the board? Do my best to summarize what I heard and see if that is the way to the point. So I'd like to see the motion to accept the report, find a new compliance, or a recommendation of development staff that for your story, put the report back, to stack the report back. Two thousand twenty two, the term, on the status of the report. That the development staff would send a letter writing them, a timing to reports, and that a report is received within sixty days of receiving the verification. And they would be terminated.
Second.
The new and second, all the favorite, please see if anybody.
Hi.
Same sign for your opposition. Any wasted? Can you say hi on that? And any of this? The report is accepted. Next, we'll move to clearly full storage company, that column number, rate. If there's no better, I'd like to see the motion to accept the report, and it applies for the recommendation. Staff, that all the staff will report back to the third over. Report, as well send a reminder, by time the network is ready, it's needed. As providing sixty day window for compliance, or else the CRA would be terminated. Thinking that as a motion. The new and second, all the favorite, please see if anybody. And sign for your opposition. And any other questions?
Okay. Hold me. So after the global league. Moving on to who we do. Moving forward. Of those, it's the district project, so. Thank you for the time.
The next one on the review is constantly. Obviously, if you see R A, we will begin with the consent. For the agreement.
Okay. In the consent agenda page, our bridge for realness, homeless, number three, four. Top of the page. We do the long, we do it to make a note. Eighteen grand, D L C, number two is new. This year, number fifteen, gravity, number two is new. Twenty five and twenty six on the list, pinch one company two, and pinch one company three, new. Research Owls Company is number twenty eight on the list is new. Then number ten on the list, former upholstery at K D L, that thing is all. And so it's on the consent agenda, because we're building this year. The reason why is there was no value to a date, say, project. It's determined by Canada, so there's a little reason to. Agreement, so there guys be quite sticky. That's all I want to talk about. So for the balance of these. You're on the consent agenda list, if they are being received in the amendments to the agreements. The recommendation to the church was to vote on the report.
Thank you for the report recommendation, are there any questions? If there's any further.
Just to be clear on, and though we're going to continue, but we need to make a distinction on that for purposes of the measure. Uh, you know, if you would like, it might say, you know, to continue building that the children will be agreement. Section the rest of the bill. That will work.
Still, there's a way, we just find compliance, and so there's all the thing that apply, so, but I'm open to any motion that you'd like to.
I like Mr. Jones, I can just be a I like to be there.
Seeing no further, do you guys like to see the motion, having a review, like, see the motion to accept the C A or report? Set the report, find them, and if you like, that is the fourth level upholstery, appropriated, we need a property of C, C R A.
Totally. Thank you.
The new and second, all the favorite, please.
I.
The same for your opposition. And any of this. We will move to, the first is accepted, we will move to review, and that page.
I'd say this report, yeah, but this is the new agenda A, which is from the big old new report, passive reverse value. The agreements were not client and referral, but expiring over. Yes, city's deadline. Or the state deadline, simple state deadline. But we get their report. And we do report. We find them before we find. So Grandland, they take the road on this crew, and kill you, and you send letters, advice about to me.
Thank you for the report recommendation, are there any questions? If there's no further, we like seeing. I agree with it second up. All those are favorite, please see if anybody. I'm saying side for the opposition. Reporting itself.
Hey, next is G B, which is the promoted, same, which is the code of ways, regulations. There's twelve agreements. And then like, so for twenty twenty, they have the discussion, but they're. A and B. C, job payroll, where this was below. They thought the profile of under vice general section, seven on one, eight five, C one. Have been taken into consideration, and his relations would sadly be. So twelve agreements. Just sort of roll down the list pretty briefly, which indicates each one of these, what their situation was, just to clearly. Nine hundred shore north. I'll refer to school port, line, four, handle jobs and payroll. It's a huge project, they're still within there, job creation timeframe, but they were, they were still low. Birdcat, future project, page number seven, so they got payroll. Black sand, either C, former university, pitch one number eight, jobs. Lewis Ventures, low jobs payroll. Correct, which is more job low, payroll, so. We talked about them earlier, they were getting handed. C S E leasing, contract sweepers, page two hundred sixteen, low down payroll. One, two, one, D, L L C, future projects, still on their job creation timeframe. Page two hundred twenty three, low jobs payroll. The school book number two, future projects, still in the job creation. Seven, low jobs and payroll. Fashion bank, page two hundred twenty nine, low jobs payroll, giant balloon, pitch three, low jobs. Ice bridge on changing, pitch two thirty two, low jobs payroll. People's companies, intended to save their fort, future project. In their job creation timeframe, which is low jobs payroll. The examining companies. To help them save food, yeah, low jobs, but that will see. Line thing is low jobs payroll, all these. Recognition is to hold on, it's good.
Thank you for the report recommendation, are there? Yes, well.
Just, just a terrifying question on both Clarice and on I grew, and then we, I believe we've had some issues in the past with finding the reporting, has that been rectified at this point?
Um, for Clarice, yes, and what was the other one? Oh, yes, that's good, rectify. Okay. Done that, thanks. Thank you.
And when you say low numbers to COVID, that is from the entity, correct? So that's, you're reaching out to these entities, and they are saying these numbers are low due to COVID, due to the ability to hire, or is that the department saying it's low?
We have heard back from some of these companies, that that's that producing time. But as the department, we look, these these agreements have initially been on consent, the job numbers, you know, closed and exceeding. So because of the sheer number of these, at the late twenty twenty, was too crazy here. Going across the board, in that, a lot of it was fifty seconds. Our decision was, we would just include these for this year, very much like we did in Delaware in the session for books.
So this is your grouping, basically saying, in an otherwise normal year, these are all client, strong companies that are, that are missing, that are off job specific.
Are any additional? If there's no further view, like, see conditions, except the CIA reports, find a compliance, or the development staff. Action, action for.
I move.
The new and second, all those are favorite, please signify by voting back.
Bye.
And I guess. What are they said? Next, we will move to review agenda C by three bullet two. Back, sorry.
Okay. Review agenda C. Finding limits for the school district, community, which I see. For the start, starting from page one, number two, which is eight hundred more high investments, L L C. Enterprise on agreement, seventy five percent, and your agreement. So background on this project here is consistently constructed for the ten store approximately. Consistently construction of a ten story, approximately. School foot, yes, we go down, commercial office, retail development. Station, seventy-seven thousand square foot, ground floor, refound space. Station parking, four hundred, four vehicles on one level underground, or second floor. Approximately forty-five thousand square feet of commercial office space, floor three two five, a mock sea hotel, before sixty-nine, second restaurant, the roof, ten floor. And in the North High Street, the short North High Street. On the portions of this project, they took the enterprise on agreement. It's going to be the, that's a, a, a space in eighty-six. Project was expected to begin, fall of twenty seventeen, and all the project improvements expected. The difference to the agreement, new jobs are thirty, at point two. Job payroll is one point four four, one million, four hundred twenty-five thousand, job payroll. Low income job limit. Property investment with eighteen point two million, fourteen million in office, and four point two million to garage. Yeah, it's worth, which is, which is right now. So they reported, uh, the investment number, um. Four five, six, one. Um, that's eighty-one percent, totally, okay, man. Yeah, they don't need job, yeah, they don't need job, they're low. They're good job for them in the year one. Two, ten, for the payroll, the year one was four thirty-seven, right back. Their situation was, they were delayed to report, they were, they were not able to provide any, any job, or able. They were on consent agenda last year. Twenty twenty was the first year of a three-year job creation window, because they were retaining jobs. Further, the enterprise, one hundred percent. Space was needed. Co-working, base operator. They sell these co-working space, and the current co-working supplement is Ustar Network. We didn't receive a report before we were. Fries. Upstart, technical, technical obligation to provide job payroll information to the enterprise, to at least, if we were, not at least. Also applies by the enterprise that. They will not, the language that speaks. We work to ensure that, that provides job payroll information to the city. There's a clause to remain there. For that, for doing, for landing gender-based. So we know that there are jobs in. Well, there are jobs that we were, has. Should just not yet reported. Um. City recommendation is to continually report that. I stole the job creation time, send enterprise a letter, request a good job payroll report, for the employees to attend currently, recent one hundred percent, your office space. And also a job, they have mine, in the process for taking. New jobs. Would like us to. Okay, kind of like, you're going on there, so.
Thank you for the court recommendation. Are there any questions or comments?
I, I like adding, I, I love it.
Sixty days, then one July, would you like to, if the city, they, would you do the, do the song, or would risk the, since the river John Christian time? This was the fourth or fifth year. Yes, our, our recommendation would definitely keep it. Is all we feel like, if we don't do the report, of course, we still, fashion things out, that, by suggesting that it might be the song, that we. Are back, that, I think that turned, that we, we risk. So the recommendation will be. Said. That they, we're working on sixty days, but we seem to the matter, that we, we, we have listed.
Let me just get a clarification. You said that they did rectify here, these agreements, say that they do need to report, or they're working.
Well, I did not include that in the recommendation, but the recommendation was, they need, they do need to get that information. Even, even if they don't, like, you said. Need that information. Their challenge is going to be, the, the job creation, the spirit jobs. They made the decision to, we saw this space to co-work. The situation with co-working space is that most co-working parents, for a short time, we, we're not in here. Be here for a month, couple months. Give staff what I'm doing, we grow, relocate some of ourselves, they got a long term, please. So if we can't get that information. They're gone. They're there for the show. But they made that decision for this. But we do want the information we work. And we also want to know how we're going to get to three jobs. Yes. You know, they say with the job. And give us that information. They're restless, dissolve, maybe more, and we come back and give them three years. That, get, to give them, normally, if it's a three year, remember, we know. They could actually have no jobs, no jobs, dirty job. And then the clients could be there, thirty. But if it's left, no jobs, no jobs, those goes two years, we will sit in the lab, we'll say, hey, rather. On payroll, we're going to. Like to stay on that, to think, then the where was. At the, the point where. The fish. And they, yeah. And, you know, just hear what it meant, it could boost me, but.
So, you know, we know that Upstart have been begging up the entire rework space. Right, it's a company that we've been working with expanding in form, but so there are a lot of dots there, it's not that, that's, you know, vacant or empty. But it's that relationship of co-working, uh, we worked the tenant, then they're getting their clients to report the jobs, that maybe that's not exciting. That's that kind of two-step process, it's a struggle.
It's just a big situation, uh, so it's not like the jobs aren't here. Because of this setup, it's got to be a different circumstance that you'll have to assess. And so, I think that's why I was asking, they, they did it to the movies, to say, hey, guy.
So it's really this step of rework, so I'm figuring it into their agreements with the companies, that occupy the thing, et cetera, that, that's the missing digit right now.
Yeah, I, I mean, I think the Turf wants to include the sixty day, I'm fine with it, I see it as different than the COVID relief one, the one we talked about before, like, you're talking about multiple years of not complying. So we're, feel like you have to threaten, if we have a three-year job hold for this, for this review, to then on year one, say, you have two months, or else we might dissolve. To me, seems a bit premature, but yeah. I, I'm finding what the recommendation is, I, I, if we gave them three years, we probably should at least give up one or two to start, to help the. To start to comply, to give us some numbers, and if they don't get there by year three, or they're still not sending in reports here three, that's a big issue, yeah.
Well, it's saying at risk of, of being about, right, that's different from the other one, right?
I'm, 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 when you say at risk, it tends to. Because. They don't want to lose. So they will do. Whether we actually do. It's, it's a threat, or there's not a big threat. So, it's equation thirty percent.
Any other questions, comments? Really, for the court recommendation. I would like to see the engagement, to accept the report, find the compliance. With the, my left bill, instead of recommendation, as well as sixty day notice. I move the clients, or else.
Possibly, they, they, they would be at risk.
Okay, you're first. Like, see, emotionally, except the report for finding the compliance per the economic developer. Who, recommendation. Sixty day notice. And the compliance, risk of dissolve. Move in second, all in favor, please signify by voting aye. I, I, and send your opposition, and I guess.
Next on the list is, um. Henderson Development Company. Page one, number six. So the present agreement. Term of seven, five, seven to ten years, there's been no filing. Firmly, for the agreement. A little bit, yeah, empty twenty-two, home board, extend beyond twenty-four years. The background. Project, safety construction, two separate, spent with a class A line, done through, guys, so. Will be house, sort of, leave for one and hundred nineteen, this is great. Project was traditionally extended to the end. Due to the, 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 except the, the, the. With no net commitments after. And beyond twenty-nine. Agreement was amended and chained over twenty-four, to revise those dates. The current timeframe of the project is expected to be. All will promptly improve, is expected to be taken by December thirty-first. With no exemption to commence after twenty twenty-one, will extend beyond thirty. New job commitments, right now, are twenty new jobs by twenty twenty-three. Seven hundred thousand dollars in payroll, no retention commitments. A will promptly improve them, investment commitment by just over eighty million dollars. The full store village of the project is, um, just under two hundred and sixty-eight thousand. So. They've invested some money on structures out there, that they read out. But, there's no construction, payroll, recorded. For really, a leg of the green, for twenty-five, structure. Situation was that they were late with reporting. Their reporting was in plain, construction job payroll reporting. They are, once again, have, honest, destruction. So last year, they were on the. And they reported late, once they were doing, they were. In twenty nineteen, we had a prior request, and that will not be agreement. For the enterprise, the project had against again, when we know the timeframe, or twenty twenty-one, they had again requested, making a deal. So they, they went to him at one time, they were just on the windows out, they're going to be, struck the project. They've asked us again, if there were. City, the starting number to a loan, within the same time. City recommendation, we will dissolve. Then the recommendation, when the pride, to come back to the city, the mayor, let me. Reason, probably, whether.
How consumers worry, is there's an, uh, rice, and seven league, just in the southeast ornament intersection.
It would be a really good project for that area, because that is sorely lacking in, in the. The leader's, he's waiting to run, he cannot, the project normally doesn't. That's why he's chief for this, so, that's why our recommendation was, we saw, come back. Consider project from there.
Thank you for the report recommendation. Are there any questions? If there's no further review, they seek a motion to accept the report. For the recommendation of the economic knowledge. The resultment of.
I leave.
Second, although they were placing by my moving, I, I'm staying silent for the opposition.
All right, number two on the list is the runner building. Page one, number nine, enterprise on agreement, seven, about ten agreement. Running from twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-seven, so they're in the seventh year, the late term. Project, uh, consisted of the establishment of a new class A office space, consisted of approximately. Eleven thousand, ten square feet. And the North High Street, the short one. Though the project involved a total investment of approximately one point six four million, fifty-six story, seventy-one thousand total store foot, mixed use, so. Which includes storage and parking on the lowest level, details of law parking on the first level, commercial office on the second floor, thirty-three residential apartment units on floors three to five. And three penthouse units and bough house. Project was scheduled to begin in July of twenty sixteen, but was suspected, bigger by January twenty eighteen. The job creation commitments for the commercial office space were four new jobs by twenty twenty. That's their final year of job creation last year. Uh, commitment for the payroll was under sixty thousand. So, we came job commitment. Virtual office portion of the, the property investment, it was part of my four million. With that eleven thousand funded in the school fee. Reported this year, a private investment of two and a half million dollars, related to the virtual office portion. The thirty-five, that's, for what I think. There were no jobs reported, future commitment, four, and then we, uh, pay them. People can see, or say, it came in there. So their situation was an incomplete report, and low job payroll report. Was on the review agenda, part two, last year, the full review, status of program recommendations. A, sure. Program recommendation, follow up. Twenty twenty was the third year of future job creation window, open for the jobs. The only reports were submitted by the prime. So the bottom part of the situation is that. He followed up with enterprise, prior to compared to the summer, and, and want to see the response directly to their. However. Job payroll report was received directly on your ten, E G V. Questioned then, ten of E G V, I saw that, right? Submit the job payroll report directly to the enterprise, it's early report instructions. And the enterprise will last, and it's, it's, um, the responsibility, we, and, put forward to the city. They're responsible for, for their landlord. Landlord, just enterprise, for. That stipulation is highlighted, for the destruction. City's recommendation, in the agreement. Those jobs. Send the enterprise a letter, plenty, full recording, in sixty days, receive the letter. They need to give a report for their, they need to send, that time soon. Should the request not be fulfilled in that timeframe, then the agreement will be at risk. The reason why I will recommend that this dissolution, drive all the reports down. It's very responsible with the enterprise to report. On EGV.
Thank you for the recommendation, any other questions?
So is this, is this your dream where we've got numbers as far as property investment, but no jobs?
Yes. And attendance there. But. I didn't look for report. I've just done it like last week. Spoiled. And I emailed that, said I appreciate the reform, but we didn't send, however. Which is then. Leads to a review.
Or like to add a timeline?
Yeah, the, the, our recommendation is.
Heard the hours. If there's no further review, they seek emotions to accept the report. What the direction that. For the second, although they were placing by my moving night. I'm hiding.
Number four, our supply company, the industry investment company. Page one number eleven. The project status report, enterprise on agreement, seventy five, seven, ten years. Near one of ten, the payments could be available since vice from. Project involves the expansion of their corporate headquarters, distribution facility. Approximately thirty thousand square feet. Project was expected to begin November of twenty eighteen, with the improvements to be completed by May twenty. Amendment's proof agreement, change jobs twenty point two, payroll to fifty seven million. New jobs by twenty twenty two, fifteen. Job payroll was. The property investment was two point six billion. Situation is that they did not report. We have somebody. They were on the new agenda part two, the twelve point two. But this year they did not report. Have reported contact with the company. I left the company. This was information provided by the enterprise, and we sent computer as a. So the company called back by in precessus, without including company. City caused us to keep in contact this year, think we'd be forth for the first being large, no word. I was just contacted by city staff, who turned to obtain a report, but there was false. So. City's recommendation is to continue, said the enterprise a letter with lots of bad. The bid sixty days of receipt, so that their full payment report. Full report is not received, and so there is a secret of the letter. Agreement should be resolved.
They have not reported, that's part of my opinion.
No, they did. They did, they, they, it's just they didn't report.
So they were on R two last year?
They were on R two, which was, um, late reporting, but, but they actually did report, they didn't, they didn't. So they have a mystery. First, whether they, but they didn't get done.
They report their report, recommendation, alright, so question to review, I vote. But they did report, but they're a flower.
Yes. They're still in their job creation window. So it's their first year, so they're limited, they'll be five jobs.
So they're still in their window. Where is, was the department's recommendation dissolution and not? You're up to solution.
Because we need a full report. Let's say they report, but the missing pieces. They, but if they, if they don't report. They go ask for a report, but they don't. Sixty more days.
Was that the letter that we sent last year to them?
The letter that we sent last year was, was we needed a report, full report in sixty days.
And we never got. Will they have a small review? You're not like, see, motion to accept the report, they find. And look. The move in second, although they were placing by my moving night. Big time for the opposition, and they did. Where is it?
From the four, next actually number five, the five. This list here, Rose, Holden, and T B G, Gallo Tapos. Fifty two, fifty four. Frozen agreement. Seven five percent, ten year, those that, uh, would start to go later than twenty twenty one, they were extended on. So they're actually near minus one, oh, ten, oh, one. Project consisted of renovation, occupation of vacant production. Project expected to begin January twenty twenty, and all agreements to be concluded by December. Change job number thirty six. Payroll round one, change a bit of a four. Good job commitment of twenty, by twenty. Good job payroll of a hundred and a thousand dollars. That's been probably six. Square footage is. So. Their report, the private investment was one point two, one point nine million, or seven hundred and twenty six attainment. They did not report construction payroll. But it's one of their construction. So their situation is sort of too bold. One is that they reported. They also reported that. And it was definitely important. And there was no construction payroll reported. Enterprise has advised the city that they were working on obtaining the data, but as of yet, no construction payroll, it was given to the city. The reason why construction payroll is important. It's a mention that he reported, maybe Ohio reported it in the government, but construction payroll. It's like new job payroll. Construction payroll, each year seems a million dollars. They give them forty here. And the city revenue shares would give back to school. They go, says there's construction jobs related to the structural project or tasks. During that construction. This particular project, the construction payroll was projected, but we need. So no revolution was really expected. But it's still important to get the review. The second situation is that on March third year. City received a email from the county auditor. At the enterprise and filed their D T D, but then the increase in value for twenty twenty was due to, one. Triennial valuation, and then two, a correction to that. Should be referred to by Kanado, October of twenty nineteen. For one point two six four dollar. So the increase in value, due to triennial correction, debated as opposed to before. Harson. That the D T D were deboarding task mission, also to advise to not. So the bottom line here, here's the evaluation for that. Similar situation to. Enterprise has advised of that. City's recommendation is to continue. Said the enterprise a letter requesting full reporting within sixty days of receipt. Should the request not be fulfilled within that timeframe, the agreement would be at risk of dissolution. Additionally, the letter should, one, find enterprise or the quarters of anchor, and we report them. Two, suggest that the enterprise should consider requesting the agreement to dissolve, if there's no.
Thank you for the report recommendation. Much for that. For review, they seek emotions to accept, it's C R A report. And look. It's been moved in second, although they were placing by my moving night.
Aye.
Okay, next on the list is. Group review hotel. Got a few more of these. Group review hotel, page four number fifty five, and the school report, and project agreement. For ten years, seventy five beta. Place twenty fourteen, twenty twenty three, this year seventy ten. Project included construction of a new ninety five thousand, year twenty one square foot hotel. It began in the summer of twenty thirteen. No retained job payroll commitments, new job, one of the five, but sixteen. Payroll, report limit of twenty seven. Real property improvement investment, or the purchase for the new job. The situation is, they could not report. This is kind of the. Enterprise missed the city's date of reporting deadlines. Again, seventeen, forty. Advise new job creation, new job payroll commitments. Well, it's the. In twenty twenty term recommendation was previously presented. And until last reported year, we have present. We have been the holder of establishing contact with enterprise. However. With this agreement. They have established contact this summer. City was advised, but reporting contact from the beginning of this agreement has passed away. They're beginning reporting for the agreement, it's something that all the enterprise. Enterprise's responsibility goes. So. City distributed the reporting materials for both, for the twenty nineteen and. After the enterprise. Full reporting for both years has been received by the city, but the report said yet to be. Just. So. City's recommendation is to accept the late files, be applying. Four terms, the agreement, put them back to twenty twenty term, on the results of the review. Also send the enterprise a letter, wanting them, but the reports are accurate.
Thank you for the report recommendation, any other questions?
Just to enter, you said they have been compliant prior to this.
Yes, and if my memory serves me right. We even, let me share this. Was it an expanded agreement, to bring the job? They actually had the answer, they've been exposed to such a project. They've been applying up until. Just that sort of thing happens. When presented with that, they were able to sort of develop into some, some files. So they're responsible. And they report that, but that just like. Oh, they're like trying to bring in.
Any other more questions? There's no further review, like, see, because there's some big review and finally, for the expense outlined by that economic development. So, but we've been second, although they were perceived by my moving night. Same, but the opposition, and they have. Where is it?
Okay, um, next on the list is our bill point ten, one hundred. Page four number fifty six, and the school report, and the progress on the agreement. The five, seven, ten year agreement. The basement is firmly pending, sixty day hold. What that is. Firm yes, how this works in. Project is completed, either improvements are done, the enterprise files, they will be. And the county checks that, use it. But this is to state action, making a, which is a fine combination. They have the agreement, so yeah, this is the right. The right company is the right project, it's all the things line out. You guys have built it out, give it a baby. Probably ninety nine out of a hundred. Positive. Every once in a while, I'll give it in. But I don't really remember. But what happened is when it comes back county. Um, closed for sixty day hold, because there is a situation where maybe the state action. And who do they then? With a sixty day window, where the applicant and speak there. That's the time in turn. That's the sixty day. And so on, either maybe twenty nine or eight thirty of this year. They in place, believe. So the project consists of the renovation of a vacant industrial area, the completion of the leave. It's expected to begin seventeen nineteen, and we went by December of December. So. County of twenty twenty, was there a construction will build? The jobs commitment is twenty three, in forty, by twenty twenty two. The job payroll is just over one point six seven million dollars. One retained job commitment. Job payroll gave it out. Definitely, you know, property commitment is one point six five billion. Store footage involved is just over a hundred seventy seven, behind. So there were four, was, uh, private investment of two and a half million. Well, construction payroll. So their situation is, uh, in complete reporting, but the double construction jobs are paid. For here. Slang about why construction payroll is important. We only projected payroll to be. Two hundred and twenty eight thousand dollars, based on the real promptly improvements. So no revolution was expected of their buildings. For a linear follow-up, I see the staff, who were the life of the enterprise, and they did not attain. The construction job payroll information from our general. But city recommendation is that it will be continued. Send the enterprise a letter requesting full report, sixty days of sleep of the letter. Should the request not be fulfilled within that timeframe. Best. Other should also be my name of orders. Accurate, finally.
Thank you for the report recommendation, any other questions? See no further review, they seek emotions to accept, it's C R A report, and finding. Further recommendation, next action, why you have no. The move in second, although they were placing by my moving night. Same time you have.
We got three more to go. We've got three more to go.
Get rid of that.
Okay. Want to roll or wait for a minute? We're all. Okay. Uh, next up is town square, company partnership, hundred bank. H four number fifty seven, like we have a federal, enterprise agreement. Seventy five to seventeen years. That's running from twenty fourteen to twenty twenty three, this year seven of ten. Project consisted of the renovation. Of mixed use facility of approximately six thousand, six hundred and fifteen square feet. One on one south high street, that's a south west. Project spent to begin July twenty thirteen. Who wants to be. No retained job, payroll commitments, the new job minimum was two. Twenty seventeen. Associate. That's what the appropriate. Population is, they did not report. The city and the state deadlines, they. Or. So our recommendation is. Forty forty, sixty days of receiving the letter. Should the request not be fulfilled, the bid that. Would be.
They have a history of not reporting.
We've had a history of some late reporting, uh, some difficulty in getting. Reporting, added funding bank. Asked, but there were the, there were plans. To report. However. Your seven. Even to it, which is why if the right negotiation is. Sixty days, we don't get it.
Thank you for the recommendation. There's no further review, like the city might accept the report and finding the compliance. Further recommendation. The move. The move in second, although the favor is. I, I.
You are. Uh, upgrade equity. Texas, page four number fifty eight. Object, the president will then. The agreement is to end no length in twenty twenty two, nor extend beyond. So the project consisted of the renovation of approximately three hundred and eighty nine, and five hundred and nine square feet. So you can warehouse an office, we still have. Seven eleven, South River. It's the old company. Project was expected to begin in March twenty twenty, with all real property improvements expected to be. They are still in their construction. The agreement had no retained job or payroll commitments. Good job minimum was twenty seven by twenty twenty five. payroll was just over one point two million. The programs is. They didn't report. Brand new project. Twenty twenty was your first year. Just the city's state reporting deadlines. Interesting thing about this is we. Twenty nineteen, there's building or arguments. And a pre-schedule. Where the, the agreement versus. The city's reporting there. Don't find them, and they got. Fifteen day rest, so they still got to work within that fourteen days. We invoice them. If they modify. And until that late figure you see, we don't do anything. Who we thought long apart. Text. Text. Moving forward, the agreement is beginning. So. They were sent a, an invoice of five hundred dollars. But we still never see. So. Per a request from the enterprise. And they, they were sending fresh set or reported out. Enterprise then advised the city. Why? That their property was devalued by the county auditor. But the city advised the enterprise that. Four was thirty five. From the county auditor. In early August. Situation is that the owner filed a grant for revision. Valued by the county, the Carson. Because Carson, the O R, just about just over two million. Be able to sit here and store the battery. There is a document of different permits that that didn't go through in twenty twenty one, however. They didn't tell what the increase, they need to leave. So. Enterprise seemed to think that. It was devalued by the auditor, however, the evaluation. The response to it was filed by. So the evaluation property was issued. Which likely would, if that evaluation happened, or the improvements were made. They have no negative effect. Evaluation of the. Small. Devaluation. So I think the price. Like. Initial problem was, well, here is the value. Because of some reevaluation, there's nobody from debate. They're likely will be, however. No report is received. So. City's recommendation to continue. And the enterprise a letter requested full reporting in sixty days. Should that request not be supported then? And agreement would be.
Thank you for the recommendation and thorough review of the auditor and board of revisions. Is there any question or feedback from members of the board? Hearing none, I seek motion to accept that of the board. For the recommendation, that can allow the office to pursue those next steps. The move in second, although the favor is. I, I. Same as any other position. But can we find them again? Like that.
Well, we could, we could roll the dice and continue and. Report again. But I think that we've been. Apparently they go around, we don't. Do anything. Relating to. The times. While they. Report. The private business.
So that concludes the substance of the meeting, I thank the ladies and gentlemen. And honorable presentations, one way else, kept in, else keeping matter. Uh, as those who are in like to know, your next created new tip, enterprise own. Application, what the others offer to review. As, as the auditor, I am asking this board by neutral sort of practice. Actually, the permanent action grant for denied application. Beginning in twenty twenty one, while the news is issued, the enterprise owners haven't given notice, and the others offices begin to recommend. Application to be denied. It's a little very much sure they found a failing proper administration of the city profits, they were big enough times to apply the information required. For the term that we change for in here. Have a good work, all this is medical, the first standard, unless there is a problem for different projects. Go and continue to receive the recommendation. We're right. Is there any other business to pull there? Being that they are adjourned.